All right, good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of Thursday, September 8th, 2016. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Union, a nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Keith, would you take role, please?
Sure. Larry Fox.
Here.
Jeff Newsom. And your Joe Kalani.
Here.
Sue Grissom. Mike Mitchell. And Tom Murphy.
Here.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, item four, approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved, support.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kalani, a second from Commissioner Murphy. Are there any changes?
I do have one.
Okay.
The, uh, I'd like to move eight A, special use permit underneath public hearing, underneath number seven.
Okay. Is that all right with both of you?
I have no problem with that.
All right, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and a motion carries. Next up, item five, approval of our meeting minutes.
So moved, support.
We have a motion to approve our July 28th, 2016 meeting minutes from Commissioner Voight, second from Commissioner Kalani. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and a motion carries. Next up is a call to the public. If you are here for any agenda item or any item other than the site plan application and special use permit 542, the airsoft program or proposal, you'll have an opportunity during that time. So if you have anything that you'd like to say to the planning commissioner of the township this evening excluding the airsoft proposal, now would be your time to come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close our call to the public and we'll move to item seven. This is a public hearing and a special use and site plan application number 542. What I'll let you know is how we run a public hearing here in Heartland. We'll open the public hearing here in a moment and then we'll turn the floor over to our planner who will introduce the proposal and any comments he wishes to add at this time. We'll then invite the applicant up to come and give their proposal. And then what we'll do is ask the applicant to go back to their seat and we'll open the floor up to the public. So anybody in the room that would like to make statements of for against or just in general in regards to the airsoft proposal, your opportunity will come at that time. Then we'll close the public hearing. We'll ask the applicant to come back up and the applicant, the planning director, and the commission will have a discussion. We will get answers to all the questions you have during your phase of coming up previous, earlier in the meeting. We don't do a lot of interaction during the public hearing. We'll just take your comments and get you the answers before you leave this evening. So with that being said, I'd like to open the public hearing at 7:03 PM for the applicant Daniel Kim and Lisa Giggler, parcel ID numbers 4708-25300-003 and 4708-25100-004. The applicant is requesting approval to establish an airsoft private recreation facility on two parcels of land comprising approximately 48 acres in the CA Conservation Agricultural Zoning District located at 1380 Pleasant Valley Road and the adjacent property to the north. And just for the record, we want to make note that all the public notice requirements for this public hearing have been made. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn the microphone over to our planning director, Troy Langer.
Thank you, Chair Fox. This is a zoning map of the Heartland Township. Over in this area would be M 59, or excuse me, 23, and then M 59 going across in east-west configuration. The area where this property is located is on two properties. This one right here and then the larger one somewhat to the south in this area. This property is zone CA. That's Conservation Agriculture. That's generally viewed as a single-family slash agriculture zoning category. What the applicant is proposing is to perform, well, I should back up, on this property currently is a, what I'll call a gravel quarry, gravel pit operation. That operates at certain times during the day, I think it's from 7 till 3. So what the applicant is proposing is to install and perform an airsoft recreation facility on this property at times that would not conflict with the gravel quarry operation. And what I've got is an aerial view map provided by the applicant that shows the subject property. This being Pleasant Valley Drive here, M 59 just being off to the north of this. And then outlined in red is the area for the proposed activity. It's largely an open field and in there the applicant would do, install a village scenario and other areas for the gaming activity to occur. The primary access will come in, not from the main access up here, but they'll have to come in on the secondary access here, parking in this general area, and then you could see the red, maybe that shows up a little better there, for the property. So that's a general overview of the project. This type of activity is what we'd call a private recreation facility. A private recreation facility is only permitted in the CA district by special use permit. So the applicant has essentially two applications here in front of you right now, one being a special use permit, the second one being the site plan itself. The special use permit requires the planning commission to forward a recommendation to the township board, and the township board is the entity that actually makes the decision with respect to the special use permit. The site plan is under the jurisdiction of the planning commission. So this being a public hearing for the special use permit, also serving as the initial site plan review by the planning commission for this project, this being the first time the planning commission has seen this project. So that's an overview of the process that is ahead for this project and that's a general overview of the project itself. I'll leave the more detailed review up to the applicant. So with that, I'll forward it back to you.
All right, thank you, Troy. Now, if the applicant would like to come up and tell us about your proposal, anything you'd like to say or present. Introduce yourself too, please.
Yeah, my name's Mike Garrison, this is my business partner.
I'm Vince Nash.
Vince Nash.
Have a seat.
And, um, we're looking to open a airsoft recreation facility. What I'd like to do is just play a brief video, it's about two and a half minutes, so everybody can see exactly what airsoft is.
All right.
Let me make sure I get on the right, I think I gotta get on this camera here.
Yeah.
Airsoft to me, it's a good weekend off, from school, from work, hang out with my friends.
Airsoft is something I definitely associate myself with, and it's something that I'm a student of, and it's something that really gets you a rush like a horse.
Airsoft is nice for a girl, and I, like, married a guy. It's funny, it's hard, it's obvious.
It's, I mean, it's, I can't, it's, 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 it's,
7:20 PM. And we're going to ask the applicant to come back on up to the table if you guys wouldn't mind. And as our planning director stated, there are two items here. There's the special use, which is the reason we're having the public hearing, and then there's the site plan. The special use has special criteria that we have to go through. And Troy, do you want to just touch on that briefly?
Sure.
Some of the items that we're going to be talking about in regards to the special use.
Generally speaking, the way the zoning ordinance works with regards to listing permitted uses, they divide uses into two categories in each zoning district. The first set of uses would be uses permitted by right. Those type of uses, for example, in a CA district, might be something like a single-family home. Where if somebody wanted to build a single-family home in the CA district, they simply have to show us a plan that shows the house meets all of the standards that apply to single-family homes. And if that home meets all those standards, by right, they are issued a land use permit for their single-family home. There's no meeting, there's no hearing, they don't have to schedule the case in front of a planning commission. It's done administratively by staff, and it is presumed on every single property zone CA that they can request a permit for a single-family home. The other classification for uses in just about every district are what they call special land uses. And those are uses where they may not be permissible on every single property. There's something sensitive about that that warrants them to come in front of the planning commission and go in front of the township board. And the township board and the planning commission want to look at how that use is going to fit with the surrounding uses. Is that going to be a good fit in that neighborhood, so to speak? And the ordinance has outlined a couple of criteria that the planning commission used to examine whether or not they feel the use is consistent with the ordinance, and therefore the planning commission could recommend approval. Or vice versa, if it is not consistent, and the planning commission may want to recommend denial on the special land use. And those standards are outlined in our ordinance of section 6.6. I think what I'll do is just try to go to the staff report. So bear with me here.
Page four.
Your page four.
Not packet page four. Okay. So. Can you blow that up?
I'm going to try. I apologize, I should be. By now, you think I would have this fully mastered. So, at the bottom of this page, and this is right out of the staff report that we prepared and we sent out to the planning commission, and in this, it outlines section 6.6 of the township zoning ordinance. And it identifies, these are the standards that have to be met in order to approve a special land use. And the first one is that this use must be harmonious and in accordance with objectives, intent, and purposes of this ordinance. So that means it must be harmonious with the intent and accordance with all of the ordinances that apply to this particular activity. Second one is it must be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. So that means it must fit not only with what's currently there, but what might be anticipated to be around it. If, for example, it was anticipated there were an area that could be a residential subdivision, the planning commission would take that into account. That even though there are not existing homes near this, they could take that into account that, well, down the road, there could be homes next to this. The third one is it must be compatible with the Heartland Township Comprehensive Plan. That's a fairly thick document, 150-some pages. And what they're looking for is that this would fit in with what the future land use is for these areas as well. If this area is shown to be residential, not only in the zoning, but in the future, they may want to take that into consideration. The next one is it must be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway, streets, police and fire protection, drainage ways and structures, refuse disposal, or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to adequately provide any such services. That means that there's adequate roads to get in and out of there, that the police, fire, and ambulance vehicles can get there. If this use were to require public water and sewer, that there's adequate public water and sewer available for this, et cetera. The next one is that the proposed use would not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to the existing or future neighboring uses, person, property, or the public welfare. And again, you're seeing this common theme, that they're focusing heavily on the proposed use will not have a negative or adverse impact on surrounding properties and surrounding uses. The last one is not create additional requirements at public cost for public facilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. So with that, is it going to require a new public road, or extension of public water and sewer, or a new fire station, or something to that effect? So those are the criteria. And if you've got questions, I'll be happy to answer.
So those are the things that we're looking at as we go through this. We'll cross over into the site plan a little bit while we're talking about it, because you heard 75-foot buffer, those types of things. And understand, it's all part of a process that we have to go through to determine whether a special use is appropriate or not. We continue on with our planning department's letter on page five. Right after that, we'll see another heading called the Special Land Use Review. And that's where we're actually reviewing it and taking a look at what we have. And Troy has given us an outline to follow, and under the section of recreational facilities, and specifically the outdoor recreational facilities, there's a need to discuss setbacks. And Troy, I guess I'll tell you. Hopefully, you don't have laryngitis by the end of the evening. But there's a lot of information that needs to be gathered on this, on any proposal. And in this case, I think there's some need for some additional information. But let's let Troy explain.
Sure. Let me get to the site plan. If I can here. So, I've provided or kind of outlined the general special use permit provisions. That applies for all special use permits, special land use requests. In addition, private recreation facilities, the ordinance provided some additional standards that the township felt were important when reviewing private recreation facilities. And the first of which is a setback. And it requires a 75-foot setback from all property lines. That generally is construed to be for structures, parking lots, accessory buildings. Now, in this case, we have a series of somewhat temporary, portable, movable structures. It appears that the structures would meet the 75-foot setback. However, due to their temporary and portable and movable fashion, I can't, the staff can't verify that they would constantly or consistently be within that 75-foot setback. But as proposed and as shown, the buildings that are proposed do comply with that 75-foot setback.
When you plan on moving these, how often do they move? Where do they go? How does that program work? Explain that.
The only buildings that will be moved is the village, which is number one. Everything else is going to be, I don't want to say permanent, but those types of things will not move. The only thing that we want to move is, in location one, we want to be able to just turn buildings, move around so doorways are facing a different direction, maybe move a couple closer together. Those are the only ones that would be moved. Five, seven, and six, four is a bridge. Those kind of would be temporary, permanent structures, I mean, they will not be moved. They basically would be maybe a small, you know, building, and most of those are going to be sandbags.
Do you have to do any clearing of trees, or grading, or anything?
No. What we want to do is, we want to keep it as natural as possible. Very little is being done to the actual field itself. We want it, you know, we like the actual, you know, terrain. That's what's different from paintball. You know, it doesn't, it's not going to mess up the environment, you know, that sort of thing. We're playing scenario-type based games.
Yeah. It's a little different kind of a site plan than we're used to seeing.
Yes, yes. And I had a meeting with the applicant. I've been working with the applicant on this project for a little while. And I thought it would be best to bring the applicant in and actually sit him down and show him the level of detail. In our line of work that we do here, the level of detail that we see in site plans. And I just picked out a site plan that we were working on and kind of went over that level of detail with the applicant on where the buildings are, the parking spaces, landscaping. So unfortunately, the level of detail of those plans, there's some expense incurred. And the applicant just felt that was overkill, or significantly more expensive than what they, for this particular type of project, would have been extremely expensive to prepare a plan like that. Unfortunately, in our line of work, we're just not used to looking at plans like this and applying the ordinance. And you can kind of see how problematic it is to apply a plan like this and apply the ordinance, so.
Well, if the commission's okay, let's proceed with it and see where this takes.
I agree.
You agree? Okay. So item B is the access. You have two access points. We received some additional information yesterday, I believe, that you are designating the south driveway as the access.
Yes. So, at the time we reviewed this, we weren't sure. But now that new information, it's this southern access right here, so this northern access would not be available for patrons of this use. They would have to come in on this southern access down here.
Do we know if there's a gate on the northern drive?
Yes, both of them have gates.
Okay. Impact on surrounding properties. Troy.
See if I can't. This is a, what you'd call a military simulation sport. It's a gaming activity with a sole purpose, it appears to be, to simulate actual military scenarios with guns that resemble military guns, with equipment and uniforms that resemble military equipment and attire. And the primary concern that we have here with how it surrounds the surrounding, or how it impacts the surrounding property, pertains to how far these guns can shoot, what that impact could be. As you can see from this area, we have a number of residential dwelling units that butt right back up to this property. And it is not totally unforeseeable that residents would be out enjoying their backyard and could be as close as their actual property line, which is a fence. And, you know, we did some research on these guns ourselves, the planning staff. Admittedly, we're not experts in this industry. The applicant has indicated the guns can shoot up to 175 feet. We've provided you some charts. They do show that these things, although they can go so far, they lose tremendous momentum and capacity. But, all depends on the type of BB, the type of gun that's being used. Some of the stuff we looked at showed they could go 500 feet. So, we had concerns with only a 75-foot setback around the perimeter of the property. So that was a concern that we had raised. In addition, well, I guess I can talk on the other stuff under the next one. So, that was one of our primary concerns with just, we don't have enough information to feel 75 feet is an appropriate setback for this proposed activity. So I'll leave it at that.
What do you guys think? You proposed 75?
Yeah, we talked about, we originally proposed 75 feet, and then we were talking. And that far back corner where number six is, you know, we could go 100 or 125. That, realistically, that far corner probably isn't going to get utilized that much. But, yeah, we can extend that, you know, another 100 feet. And remember too, there's a lot of hills, a lot of vegetation.
It's heavily wooded area. The BBs, if the BBs travel 50 feet in that area, I'd be surprised if they got that far. It's just a very heavily wooded area. The BBs carry no real weight, 25 to 30 grams. It just, if we back it up to 125 feet, I can never see a BB traveling that far.
Yeah. Some guns do. You get a sniper gun, some of them would shoot further. But one of the things that we do, anybody that comes in place, all their guns are croned. The velocity is checked, and their guns are tagged with a different color, you know. And that's also a part of their, depending on what they're shooting, is their engagement limit. So if they're shooting 350, they can't engage anybody closer than 20 feet.
So who's running around making sure that doesn't happen?
There's two referees on the field shadowing them, controlling the game at all times.
So what is the procedure, then, to check the velocity and/or the distance that the weapon will?
We have what they call a croning station. And we have a ref, somebody there, that each person has to take their gun, whatever they're using, put it through the chronograph. It comes up with their speed, they have to fire three shots. And whatever that average speed is, depending on that, say it's 350, they're tagged with a blue zip tie on the end of their gun. So the referees, and they know what their minimum engagement distance is, which in that case would be 20 feet.
So the procedure would be then, you check in, and you shoot your gun through this?
Yes, everybody, they would sign in, they would sign their waiver, they would go, and they would get a different color armband, you know, whatever the day is. And they would go and would check their guns. All guns in that are checked before the game play to make sure that their guns were checked.
So that's for the speed of the projectile?
Yes.
How about for the distance that that projectile actually flies?
That, again, it depends on the weight. We've been doing this for years, you know, professionally and, you know, recreationally. And your engagement distance, very rarely do we ever shoot more than 150 feet. I mean, they can go 175, some go further, but the velocity really drops off.
So that's something that's not checked, then? The distance that the projectile will go is not checked at the?
Yeah, there's really no way, I mean, you could, but it'd be really difficult to check each person to see how far they could go.
Are the guns variable? Can you dial it down? You know, so that it, I mean?
Oh, yeah. If someone wanted to, there's a little bit of work they would have to do with the gun. They would have to change the spring, open it up.
It's not, there's not a setting on the gun that you could dial it down and come play in Heartland next Saturday?
Correct.
Okay.
So maybe it's mentioned, but are the guns the only weapons that are allowed on the property? Or, I know there are grenade launchers, there's several different types of?
Yeah, those shoot, like, the grenade launchers, they'll shoot like a Nerf, the bigger Nerf footballs, you know. Those we tend to use for, like, anti-tank if someone's in a building or anti-personnel. But they hit the building, anybody in that building's considered out.
So that's like a Nerf ball, or a tennis ball?
It's a dart.
Two-inch Nerf dart, you can buy them anywhere.
And does that decibel, is that 80 decibel? Is that similar from that equipment as it is from one of the guns?
That's pretty, well, those, it's the same as the gun. And 80 decibels is probably kind of on the high side, because a lot of them now are electric. And 90% of the guns out there used are electric, and they're very quiet. I'd say they're probably maybe 30 or 40 decibels. There is a thing called a Thunderbee, it's a sound grenade. It goes off, it's like, I think, 120, you know.
Is the decibel rating something that's checked also? So if someone does bring an 80, or a 40, or 100 decibel?
It's one. It takes a 12-gram CO2. There is no way they can change it to, you know, the sound, it's set.
I'm just imagining, I mean, they've got down here, it's yours-to-middle, it says 80, 80 decibels, approximate level of 80 decibels. And then, of course, we can get to the 120, and we're talking 75 feet from somebody's backyard. I just, I'm thinking.
Is there a cumulative effect, too?
No.
I mean, when you're shooting, when you're shooting, there's everybody else is shooting.
Well, this is war, so I'm imagining there's guns firing everywhere.
I mean, the electric guns, they are pretty quiet. I could have brought one. But you get a lot of that going on. It's loud, but it's not that loud. And what makes this good area is there isn't a lot of stuff around there. And there are hills that will help muffle that.
Well, there isn't a lot there, but there is something there.
Correct.
And whether there were five people there, or 500 people there, it's part of what we review, too.
Correct, I understand.
And as Troy explained, we also look at the comprehensive plan. We have a fairly large residential development proposed right across the street. So there are things that are there today, and there will be more things there tomorrow. So we have to be careful about that. And that's why this falls in the special use area.
And so?
I want to go back to this, oh, I'm sorry.
Mine was simple, probably, in regards to the, just talking about the sound, the decibel. So you may have between 25 and 100 participants?
I would say on average, you know, once, you know, we were up and going, I'd say maybe 80 on average. And that'd be between a Saturday and a Sunday.
Is that at one time during an event, or is that the participants for that particular day?
It's hard to say. We've had events where we've had 25 people show up, we've had events where we've had 120 people show up. It's?
We're just trying to get a feel for the constant shooting, you know, I'll call it that.
It's not, I mean, it's hard to say, it's not, you're not always going to hear shooting. It's not like paintball, where you've got people on this side, people on this side, and they run at each other, and you have to spray a whole lot of paint. You know, it's not like that. It's?
What's the number, I'm sure you can't get 125 people on the course at one time. I think what Tom's trying to get at is, how many people will physically be on the course at one time participating in that event?
I'd say maybe 60.
Well, you can have up to 60.
Yeah, like it's a?
Do you have a limit on it? Let me have 100 people showed up, you'd let 100 people in? If 20 show up, you let 20, and you run it no matter what?
Yeah, pretty much, yes.
How many events do you hold in a day? I read your website or your pack, and it says that you pay to play all day.
What it is, is you play like scenario-type games. But, you know, usually, on that time, you're getting three to four scenarios in a day, depending on how long we want to run them. A scenario might run an hour, some might run two hours. It depends on the scenario we want to run, what people want to run, you know.
What were you thinking the hours of operation on the weekend, though?
Saturday was like 2 to 8, and Sunday, 10 to, I believe, 6.
I know it's in here, I just can't put my hand on it.
It's on page four, maybe there's another publication, but it says Saturday, 2:00 PM until 10:00 PM.
Oh, okay.
Then Sunday from 9:00 AM until 6:00 PM. And occasional night games from 5:00 PM until 11:00 PM.
So we're going to have, like, 60 people running in the backyard of these houses that back up to it, 75 feet away, playing war games at 11 at night?
That would, that's something we would like to do. I mean, it's not all the time. We do it now, we do it twice a year.
Do you think that's fair to the people that live there?
Well, it's, to be honest with you, the noise levels seem to be kind of an issue, which really, it's not a constant fight. It's just, you're not going for eight hours with just these guns going off. It's a very rare thing to have them going off for more than 20, 30 minutes at a time. They make not much more noise than two or three good lawnmowers out there running around. They're really not loud, they're battery-operated, they're not much louder than a?
But do I want to hear a lawnmower for that many hours in a week?
All due respect on that. I go, you know, I have every right to cut my lawn on a Sunday.
No, sir, no, no, no. I'm just saying, the noise levels.
But guess what? I don't do that.
No.
Because I respect my neighbors. Respect my neighbors is I don't want to run my lawnmower at, you know, when most people want to sit on their deck, or want to be outdoors.
Or they're having a party.
And have a party, and they got to hear, that's, it's just, you know, it's one thing to have like an event. I mean, you know, if they wanted to have a one-day event, and, you know, people around there understand it's always temporary and it's thing, but this is a little bit more than I anticipate.
Well, I think that?
I think making, like he said, the noise, you're going to hear very little from these woods. Like I said, I've got pictures, they have these airsoft fields in the middle of subdivisions. I mean, it's not that loud or that big of a deal.
Were those the airsoft there before the subdivisions were put in?
Yes, they built it in the middle of a subdivision.
You mean, the subdivisions were there first?
Yes.
And in that scenario, then, those people had a choice to buy in that area once they knew that that airsoft field was there. In this case, there's people living adjacent to it that don't have that choice now, because they lived there first. So seasonally, it looks to me like you'll be using it when the foliage is off of the trees also? Because you do have naturally lots of shrubbery in the dense woods you're referring to, which would block the sound and which would block the sight. I'm sure there's a flash, is there a flash that comes out of the barrel, too? There's not?
I think it was, what, October to April?
April to, you know, October.
Which way? October to April, or April to October?
April through till, you know, October.
And not through the winter.
Okay.
And so, the participants, if it's after dark, I would guess, because it's dark, they would have flashlights. I see, from the video, I saw that they look like they're wearing military equipment. So I guess there'd be lights and body lights. So these are things that will be shining through the woods. And whether there's a 75-distance offset or not, a flashlight will go a lot farther than that. You know, into the people's windows, maybe. And maybe lasers on the guns. I know they make laser sights, I was looking at a little bit of this myself.
Yep.
And I don't know what the distance is for a laser. But those are, you know, kind of disturbing, you know, if I was that person living in that, you know, adjacent neighborhood, or future neighborhood.
Yeah, I think one of the things, it looks rural to you there, but it's not rural.
Well, I mean, it is, other than, you know, some of the homes, you know, that are near there, and we, you know, we have thought about that.
Well, it's, but it's M-59. There are homes that are abutting it right now. There are homes proposed right across the street. So as we said, we have to look at the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan calls for a lot of residential around there.
I'd like to add, too, that just because it looks like there's not a lot there, those people bought 5, 10, 15, 20-acre parcels to put their home on, because they like it nice and quiet. They like to be out there where nothing's going on. And then? nice and quiet, they like to be out there where nothing's going on, and then, besides interrupting those people's lives, we're talking about this special development plan that's going on in 59 in Pleasant Valley, that is a huge residential proposal, and that's going to bring in a lot more people in that area, and it'll be interfering with a lot more residents.
I mean, is that like right across the street from the field?
No, it'd be kitty-corner across the street.
It's gonna go south on Pleasant Valley Road, quite a way, so it'd be pretty close.
It's actually directly across the street, if you wanted to, so at the north end of Gigglers, if you want to, can you zoom in and all part-
Can you back that out?
And see where that, there's a cement fence there, see the word, the word "the field", right below the word "the field", the phrase, is a white line running east to west?
Mm-hmm.
That development starts right there and goes north, so that green grass there, that, you know, there's a wetland kind of buffering along the, the west side of Pleasant Valley Road, but that whole area there, exactly right there, that's where all those homes will be, and all the way up to M-59. So, that definitely shares a border, not, not to mention the obvious border, you know, to the eastern-
Well, there is a berm, you know, that pretty much goes along that entire area until the swamp, which is, you know-
Where's that berm at? Where's that berm?
Right there, field, right along, right along there, then runs all the way down.
Which side of the road is it on?
Um, well, it'd be the south side in front of Gigglers, I'm not sure how far it goes on the other side.
Well, it's either, so the berm would either be on the east or west side, I think, at least up in this-
It's, it's on the east side.
Okay, the east side, well, the east side is a wet area, I live right in this area too, and I know this road very well.
Mm-hmm.
So, on the east side, the north of that scale entrance, we'll call it, is a wet area, that's low, for quite a distance. On the west side, it's also a wet area too, but there's not a berm there. I can look from the road, because I run that road, in both directions, completely out into the field to the west, and all the way to the east, so I don't-
Wasn't sure how far that berm went, but-
Yeah, I'm not clear where that, maybe it's a berm that's not in that vicinity.
Probably, could, could talk about lighting, and you're gonna do some generators, I guess, for your power?
Well, that would only be if we do, we do a night game, and that would only be in the registration area, down, which would be number two, the staging area. Then it would just be a few, you know, lights, you know, LED-type things.
Mm-hmm.
Wouldn't be anything, these huge spotlights shining anywhere.
I mean, even in our own recreational areas, we don't have, other than like the school project, but-
Right.
We don't have lights there, I mean, the whole idea is to be done by sundown.
Right.
Right?
Right. Yeah, and it gets into the whole parking thing here, which is another topic, but-
I mean, if that, you know, to make or break, if we can't do night games, it's, it's not that big of a deal. I mean, it's something we would like to do, there's other places that we can do that.
Well, it's wiping out Monday through Friday practically for you.
It's, it's only weekends, it's only Saturday and Sunday. There is no weekend, or during the week, it's only weekends, Saturdays and Sundays. Then our plan is really to only do it every other week.
The other thing in a nuisance to the neighbors is that you're proposing to use the boundary line along the homes on the east to be a piece of rope.
Oh, I'm sorry?
The northeast corner. The northeast corner, you're talking about no fencing or anything to keep these players within the play of the property, within the setback of the 75 feet?
No, we were gonna have a, a number of places that we do play at, with this type of situation, they have, you know, half-inch yellow rope, that designate that's the boundary, and then they have, you know, warning signs and stuff on it, letting people, you know, in, in the, the rules and stuff that, you know, that they would read when they fill out their waiver, it would state in there that yellow or red is a boundary line, and you are not to cross it.
How high off of the ground is that rope?
You know, 3 to 4 feet, you know, want it low enough that, and, you know, if someone is running, they're not gonna hang themselves, but, you know.
So, during daylight hours, you could probably see that rope?
Oh, very easily, yes.
But I think you just mentioned that maybe nighttime hours would be something you wouldn't be interested in, then, because it would be really difficult to see, well, anything after dark, but, no matter the rope. So, someone could be, let's just say they're near the rope, they're honoring that 75-foot line, but they're closer to the house, and then someone is on this side of them, shooting at them, and they miss them, because I'm sure that a lot, you know, most of your pellets don't hit the target.
Right.
So, they then, even though there's a 75-foot offset distance, and if the projectiles will travel 170 feet or more, there's a good chance that someone is aiming in that direction, and then they will end up, or could end up, into the backyard areas of those people living in that side.
Well, I'm, I'm just struggling with people running in their backyard carrying guns, and kids, and what are they thinking? I mean, I, I'm not opposed to the sport, don't get me wrong, I don't have a problem with guns-
But that's why we would put up signs.
I'm just confused about this location and this proposal here, this is not really rural, and we are talking houses that are 75 feet away.
Uh-huh.
And there are a lot of young families in there.
Right, well, the red line, there's, there is a, from their home to their property line, you know, there is a distance, that red line is basically the, our prop, the property line, and it would be 75 feet from there, you're probably talking 125 feet from our line, even to, you know, something in their backyard.
And would that 80-decibel sound carry to the backyards, to the property line of those residents?
During the summer, I, no, I, that's why I'm saying, you would probably hear very little, if anything.
Guys, because it is so quiet in this area, that, you know, we're giving, we're giving a lot of examples, I think, but just in note E there, is it disturbing to the existing or future neighborhood users? I'm thinking of someone wanting to read a book out on their deck and hearing this constant, even if it is silent, it's so quiet.
Well, the gravel pit has hours of operation for a lot of reasons, and one of them is the neighbors.
Yeah.
And you're gonna take the quiet time of that and put this out here, and I just counted the ceiling tiles across here, these are two-by-two tiles, this room is 50 feet wide, so you're talking 50% more than this, that's not very far.
And the gravel pit is probably 500 feet away, I mean, just looking at that aerial photograph, we did some estimating, and maybe that, the sounds of that equipment is higher?
Oh, for sure, for sure, they're-
Yeah, those tractors, you know, bulldozers-
I mean, they're talking, they're, they're equating it to lawnmowers and electric drills.
Yeah, the guns are probably as noisy as electric drill. I mean, I just, we moved to this area back in October, me and my wife, from Canton, we love it out here because it is quiet, but there is occasional with our roads, noisy trucks and trailers, and, you know, stuff like that, people shooting, you know, gotten, you know, used to that, but it is, it is quiet, and that's why we moved out here for the quietness.
So, a lot of people came before you and will come after you?
Oh, right, yeah.
Just like we did. And so now we'll picture 60 or 80, or maybe 100 of those, what'd you say, what'd you equate it to, the sound of?
A drill.
A drill, so 100 drill bits, maybe, 100 drills, maybe.
100 drills with 100 guys running around screaming duck over there, with lights on their hat, their, I just, I, again, I don't have a problem with airsoft, I've read your website, I actually read quite a bit on it, and I think it's, it's fine, I just don't know if this is the right place.
Well, what if we were to, you know, take more of that, where it's number six there, and ordinate off more, take more of it on a half-moon or something, you know, to give it more of a buffer zone. Maybe, maybe further up, like from where your area-
The other thing that is in this whole evaluation, and what's, because I don't know if we're gonna get through all that and resolve it, other than going back and forth on how it affects the neighbors and our differences of opinion, in letter E is the parking situation, really not used to seeing a parking lot like that. I would, I do not want to go look, but I would venture to guess that that probably isn't even on the approved site plan for the gravel pit. What that looks like is trucks that have run off the driveway at times to let one pass, or need a place to park, and that looks like compacted field.
Now, there is, you know, there is adequate, and originally, we put in there, Ron, for 100 vehicles, we only need space for like 50, because most people, that would be max, most people come in twos and threes, they'll ride together, that sort of thing.
Do you have overlapping, if you're gonna start an event at 10, do you say the next event's at 1, and one's at 4?
It's only one event each day, so someone might show up late, they're just gonna have to, you know, they would get in, it's not like, okay, we do this one event, and then we go, you know, start over and do something else, it's, it's continuous, you'll have a break in the afternoon, you know, then they'll go on to another, you know, for the game.
Just labeled parking area, not showing how many you can park, where they go.
Well, I did, I gave them a revised thing.
Well-
Basically, if you take the red line and go all the way over to the side there, I measured, in measure lock two, the distances and stuff, and with 20 feet between each vehicles, we can easily get 50 or even more, well, that one there.
Is this, this is your-
Yes.
That's the parking plan.
We can, we'll have cones, I mean, I know it's all new to you guys, the whole thing, because it is-
Well, we have to deal with public safety, too.
Correct, yep.
Okay? That's one of the things that we look out for, and, you know, unless someone's there parking the cars and lining them all up and saying, "Here, here, here," I know what that'll look like. And I don't know how you can say 100 cars will get in there.
We, we'd own 50 cars, that's what I'm saying, 100 cars, that wasn't right, usually, you know, would be 50 max.
Well, I'm only going, yeah, I'm just-
I know, that's-
I'm just going off what we got.
That's a misprint.
Okay.
If, if someone's out there parking, I mean, we have to have access or fire an EMS and police, and if you're not out there with somebody organizing a parking lot, that's, I've parked cars in parking lots, you gotta stay out there all the time, because they park anywhere they want, at any angle they want, and distances, so you'd have to control that every-
We would show people how to park, where to park, that sort of thing. And we would have signs up, we would have cones, you know, telling people where, where to park.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, they, they work well. I'll back up a little here, we talked, speaking of cars, we have two cars on the diagram here, that according to the staff letter says that they would not be-
They're just something to, you know-
Allowed anyway.
-to put with the village, just to, you know, to hide behind, that sort of-
But they're not, they're not allowed according to the ordinance, correct?
Troy, is that-
Yeah, we, we don't have a provision that allows junk cars, we've got a nuisance and blight ordinance that talks about, and I'm trying to find the page while I'm talking, so I apologize, we've got a nuisance and blight ordinance that deals with cars, if they're inoperable, unlicensed, then they're deemed, and this is the, the village plan that provided by the applicant, there's a car here and a car there, and that's basically all we've got to go by, so there was concerns there about how our ordinance is gonna address that, because generally, elsewhere in the township, if that car's not licensed or operable, we've got a code enforcement officer that's trying to get those cars out of there, and in this case, he's proposing to bring in vehicles I'm presuming would be unlicensed or inoperable vehicles.
Yeah, and that's something we'll have to get around, let's, going a lot, if you want to talk about blight, do you have to get any, like, building permits, or what other governmental approvals do you need?
No.
If you've got people climbing around in makeshift structure-
We have like-
Well, but, the Livingston County Building Department, I don't think lets you do much around here with building a structure that you got people climbing around in and about in without-
There's people's story structures.
You have to get a permit for a deck in this county, how do you build, can you build a structure that you have paid participants wandering around and playing fort, you know, playing war, that hasn't, have you checked that out? Have you looked into that?
I'm gonna buy, there's other, like, paintball facilities and stuff in the area, the people that we've talked to and we've played at, and none of them have had to have building permit to build two-by-four plywood, single-story structures.
I can, I, I, go ahead, Troy. You have- It's my understanding that if the structure is under 200 square feet, it may be exempt from a building permit, however, as part of this plan, the applicant was proposing a shipping container, now that did trigger some building permit review, and I've talked with the applicant, he's, I advised him to contact the county building department, which I believe he did, and he's contacted me verbally and said he didn't think he would be able to do the shipping container anymore, I'd asked for something in writing from him on that, I have not received that.
Yeah.
So, the plans still reflect that shipping container, I have not received any official written amendment from his proposal on that particular one, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I can get that, what it was is, they said, anything bigger than a 20 by 20 has to be, has to have a concrete footing, has to have exit lights, those types of things, and we were just gonna use that for storage for rental equipment and stuff that we need at the field, but we, we will use a trailer to bring that back and forth.
So, Troy, if I build a deck on my house that's 10 by 20, I don't need a building permit?
It's, it's different.
Okay.
Okay.
This has walls and a roof on it, and people inside of it.
I'm not a, I'm not a building official or inspector.
I understand.
I just can go by what they tell me.
Okay, well, it's not, it's not my department, but I had to ask the question.
Yeah, because when you go to these places, they're all small.
Mm-hmm. I just looked at the liability component, that's all. Are you guys carpenters?
Uh, I am, kind of.
You know what you're building?
Yeah, I am.
Huh?
Yeah, I am.
Kind of?
Yeah.
So, you asked, when people come there, they sign a waiver, what do they sign a waiver for?
They, I mean, it's a sport, it's a dangerous sport, just like a kid playing baseball or football, they could get hurt, they could twist an ankle, they could break a, break a leg, it, it is possible.
You, are they waving their, they're, they're waving their rights to go out, if they're injured in one of your buildings, or structures?
Yeah, anything, yeah. If they, there's no tree climbing, if they should climb a tree or something and fall, it's, that's their fault, I'm not supposed to be doing that.
Well, where are you guys? Because we're just on the special use, we're not, I mean, you gotta get through special use for you before you can even get into the site plan. I have the concerns, I don't know if you've relieved my concern of the neighboring properties, whether it's anybody in this room that happens to be a mile away, or somebody that happens to be 75 feet away.
To reassure them that it, it's not as loud as what they're, they're thinking it's going to be, and there is a good distance, I mean, they're talking, I live on Lone Tree Road, that, that's a good distance, with that berm in that there, you're not gonna hear anything.
Oh, I know the berm you're talking about, there is a berm on the north side of Lone Tree. Is that the berm you're talking about?
Yeah, there's a berm that goes around and up the side towards the first gate from Lone Tree Road.
Okay, so that would be in front of the Gigler home.
Yep, and there's a berm that goes between the two gates.
But for that, from that point north, where the new development will go on the west side, Mayberry Homes on the west side of Pleasant Valley Road, there is no berm where we were talking at earlier, and then there is no berm between the neighborhood and the northeast corner.
Do you, do you have neighbors?
Yes.
Do they listen to the radio?
Uh, yes.
That radio's going to be much louder than what you're gonna hear from us, the sound levels are not, it's hard to explain, I don't know how to explain this, pardon me?
A different kind of music.
I think your noise actually could be more irritating than a radio, and the reason I think it could be is because I don't think it's gonna be constant, I think if you have the constant buzz of something going on, it's, it's at the same volume, when you've got people yelling, or this popping sound at 80 decibels, the sounds of electric drills going off, and you live 75 feet away, again, it's, it's not a problem with airsoft.
These work off of, these work off of RC carb batteries, basically, it's like an RC motor, that's what drives the gearbox in the actual airsoft gun, it's a popping sound that goes, I'm trying to, the sound is-
I have an airsoft pistol with me, can I demonstrate it?
Uh, I don't know.
Can you multiply times 80, 60 people?
Actually, there's ordinances for car radios going down the road, and I do believe, I'm trying to remember the, the- I'm trying to remember the, the decibels, you're actually not allowed to be more than eighty decibels, if I remember correctly. If that's noise on the road, driving in a car, these guns are nowhere near eighty decibels, not in any way, shape, or form.
I'm only going by what you submitted.
I apologize. I understand, but no.
Let me put it this way.
It's an electric.
We, we have to deal with a lot of things like when it comes to the noise.
No, sir, and that's, and that's what I was trying to explain.
We, you wouldn't believe how much time we've spent on a drive-through speaker and everyone around this table and having to deal with neighbors who are over a hundred feet away.
Yes, sir. And that's what I mean.
And having to work around that and address it when it becomes a problem. I, I, I think you're discounting the level of noise. It's not just the shooting of the guns. It's the, it's the combination of shooting the guns, running a generator, it's, it's the yelling, it's, it's, it's all of that, that, it's an activity that results in a lot more noise than you're, you're really talking about.
Well, we, like I said, we've done it professionally for years. We do this. We know the noise that, that it, that it puts out.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, you may be right on the, on the gun portion. I'm talking about the combination of all those.
Right.
All those activities together. I think that, I don't think you would want it directly in your backyard.
I mean, on a Saturday or Sunday every other week, I wouldn't have a problem with it.
But let's say that on that Saturday or Sunday, you're having a graduation party or another family gathering or just a quiet moment with your spouse or whatever, and you can't really pick and choose when those activities will be. So, that's going to probably be irritating to those folks.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's stuff that's going to irritate everybody at some point. I mean, but where do you draw that, that line, you know?
Well, we draw the line, remember, this is a special use.
Right.
This is not a use by right.
Uh-huh.
So, you're in a different league right now. So, now there are criteria you have to match. If this, if you have to fit. If you don't fit that, then, then that opportunity to say no is there. Using this type of program on a property that has the right would be a totally different game than what we're talking about right now. Because we're not even talking about the site plan. We're just talking about, can you even do it? Let alone, have you met the site plan criteria? Because we haven't touched that.
If we look at just the special use which you've asked us to do, A and B, the first one is be harmonious and in accordance with the objectives, intent, and purposes of this ordinance. I think the activity is not harmonious to the area, in my personal opinion. It's not, it's not just the noise. It's the extra people. It's the extra cheering and yelling, the extra traffic. All that is not harmonious, in my opinion. Letter B, be compatible with the natural environment and existing and future land uses in the vicinity. And I don't think it complies with that one either. And I haven't heard how they're controlling, requiring the biodegradable pellets and bullets, but it certainly wouldn't be good for the environment to have a bunch of little plastic pellets laying around.
You'd never see them. Even the ones that don't biodegrade, you would never see.
I have, my wife has one. She shoots my backyard, and I can go out every day and pick them up. So, they're there. They stay there. So, you can see them if you're on the field. But what does it do to the environment? What does it do to the ground? Where does it, where does the plastic go? We know, plastic is not biodegradable. I'm just trying to address the issues that we're supposed to for special use.
Yep.
And those are my opinions. That's my opinion for A and B, the first two of the issues that we're supposed to be looking at.
Okay, well, we can just continue on and be compatible with the comprehensive plan, which would take a look at things like the future land use map. And there is a lot of residential development proposed for around there.
I mean, is it, is it proposed? Is it definitely?
Well, there's one of them. The program's is more than fifty percent of the way through.
First of all, you have to look at, I mean, folks will say, you know, we're a rural community, and that's open to certainly debate, depending on where you live in the township. There are certainly parts that are rural, but there are also parts that are clearly moving in the direction of what Cartland really has become, which is a bedroom community. It's a place where people's housing. We don't have huge lots of industrial. We don't have a whole lot of, of, I mean, we do have commercial.
Not a lot of it, though, yeah.
But, you know, we're not a Novi or anything like that. We are a bedroom community that many people live here and leave in the morning and go, go to work. And on the weekends, guess what they want to do? They want to stay at their house and be, and sometimes, as Tom has indicated, wants to be able to get on the backside of their porch and just relax and not have, and not be bothered. This is, this is an intense use. If this was in a different location, maybe in a, in one of our industrial areas, I would, I really, I could see this fitting more in those areas where you're backed up against the highway, where you've got the highway noise and everything else right there. I could see this as a use. I'm not opposed to this product, this type of activity. I'm not opposed to, but not in this location. This location's is a, I mean, what saddened me was when they cut all the trees down for the poles. Now I gotta look at poles when I drive home at night. But this is not an area that I could see all this activity taking place. It's not, it's not compatible with the environment.
Troy, do you want a motion on this, then?
Well, at some point, we, the planning commission's charge is to forward a motion to the township board, and.
That can either be a.
It can be a motion to deny.
A motion or deny. But at the end of the day, a recommendation, it's the board that decides.
Yeah.
Up or down.
So, if we're going to forward a motion, whether it's to approve or deny, you have to have a basis for that decision, and you have to have some findings and some facts that you feel are important to those criteria for the special use permit. And Commissioner Voit outlined some facts, some findings for two of the criteria.
Yeah, but you could just hit the other ones.
So, I would just ask that you would just address all of those as part of your motion in a similar type fashion, if that makes sense.
Should we decide?
Should you decide, yeah.
I certainly don't mean to force you to decide. I was just using that as an example of what you would be doing.
Well, I'm trying to bring it to a close.
Well, you know, I could just, you know, interject here. I mean, we are open to, you know, changes, you know, what we have to do. I mean, this is a business, you know, for us, and it is a good, safe sport. And most all the BBs are becoming biodegradable, and that's all we sell would be biodegradable.
I won't support it. The three of you would like to advance it. That would be fine.
Well.
Hide the special use.
What, there's, we have to give a recommendation.
We are.
So, it needs to be a motion. Neither, we're going to deny the special use, here are the reasons why, and send that recommendation forward. We're just the recommended body.
So, so I'll ask for a motion. Motion, you either have the motion to approve, recommend approval, or recommend denial.
Isn't that correct?
Yep. And if you want, if you feel that, you know, staff didn't provide sufficient information for you for that motion, if you want to give some direction, and we can come back at the next meeting, and I'll have prepared a better motion for you based on direction I get. Or if you feel you can fashion a motion with what we've heard and what we've got tonight, by all means, feel free to do so.
Please understand.
You can also withdraw the application. That is another option.
Could they not?
Yes.
Understand, my problem, again, is now speak for me, is not airsoft, it's this location. It's not the right place for all the items we talked about this evening.
And so, Larry, I can speak the same voice, that I have nothing against airsoft at all, but I don't think this is the location for it. It's not responsible for the neighbors that are there and the neighbors that will be there in the future.
I already said it. My wife has one, so I, you know, it's, it's not the airsoft. It's not, it's the activity in that area.
Is it? Not necessarily the people that are there now, but the future subdivision across the street?
I think I said earlier, it doesn't matter whether it's five or 500. We're looking out for the people.
Right.
And it isn't, it isn't a matter of if you can pack the room or not pack the room and that. That doesn't, that's not the point. The point is there are people that live there.
Well, I understand.
And there are many more that are going to be living there.
If we can appease the five people there, you know.
That's what he's trying, that's what he just said. It doesn't matter whether you appease those five people. It, it comes down to, at the end of the day, if it's five or 500, we have to look at, is that the right use? And is it compatible with the use and uses that's going to be there that are existing or future neighboring uses? And the future neighboring uses are, we know that that's going to be residential. It's already residential. That's what it's, that is, that's what's there. I said my piece on it. My piece on it was, I, like I said, I'm not opposed to this activity. I think it's, I think my kids even had played this at one point in time. They're doing it now, but if you haven't done it.
Maybe we can help them a little bit. Your options would be, from the talk you've heard this evening, to have us make a formal recommendation to the board. I'm gathering that right now, it does not look like it would be recommending approval. You could take the motion if you ask us to make it, or I'm going to guess a denial, and you can go to the board, who is the final decision maker, and plead your case. Okay? That would be your option. The second option you have is, as trustee and Commissioner Kalaney said, would be to just withdraw the application. Because I don't think, even if the three absent are here, that's still not a majority. So, knowing that you haven't been through this a lot, maybe that helps you out a little bit. And if you'd like to give us an opinion on what you'd like to see us do, not approving it, do you want us to deny it? Or do you take a vote on denying it? Or do you want to withdraw it?
And what does it do for us to withdraw it?
Just goes away.
Yeah, so either way, a few people win, so.
Well, we represent, we represent everybody, including the property owner of the property you're looking at. But we represent everybody else that has property here, too. And not just those that are but this. We represent every property owner within the thirty-six square miles that we call Heartland Township. So, and I think we do a pretty good job with it. So, I.
I think what you're, you're basing your decision on fear of the unknown, really, is the noise. That's what I'm getting, is you're afraid of the noise, someone sitting on their back porch one Saturday, and you've got some people running around that they might hear something and interrupt them.
If it was only the noise, that's enough for me. Because that's a nuisance.
Well, ten o'clock at night the other night, someone's in, someone's somewhere shooting their gun.
Yeah, I don't, nothing, nothing probably, not, I mean, we've talked about it. So, nothing probably is, at this point, is going to change my mind.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
I understand, and I, and I appreciate you thinking of Heartland Township and a place to locate a business. We are very welcoming to that. As all four of us said, just not at this place. That's not at this location. But doesn't mean it can't happen. It's just not going to happen here. If these four people make a recommendation to the board and the board goes with that recommendation.
Yeah.
All right, we'll just withdraw it.
Okay. Troy, you all right with that?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Again, thank you for thinking of us and coming to Heartland. You know, maybe we'll see you again in the future at a more appropriate place, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have item eight B, which is the Tractor Supply Company Site Plan Application Number 541A. This would be an amendment to a previously approved site plan application number 541. And we'll invite the applicant to come on forward. We're going to turn the microphone over to our planning director first, and then we'll ask you to add anything you'd like to add to the proposal. So, Troy?
Thank you. This particular project, let's see here, I want to get to, not this, right here. This is a site plan for Tractor Supply. Tractor Supply is looking to occupy an existing vacant building in the Heartland Marketplace Plan Development, Walmart, Heartland Marketplace Development. Maybe I should start with a zoning map, just to generally show where this is at. This is 23 going north and south. This is 59. We're going to be in this general area. This is all, this white with cross hatching is a planned development. And in here is what was formerly Walmart and then a retail shopping complex component just east of that Walmart department store, former Walmart department store. And Tractor Supply has been before the planning commission to renovate that building and do some facade changes and add an outdoor garden area. And that has been approved by the planning commission, and it was done earlier this year. They are now requesting to amend that site plan, and the amendment to a site plan requires coming back in front of the planning commission, unlike the previous case that had a special use permit component to it. This does not. There's not a public hearing, per se, with this. It is a public meeting. And what the request is related to is, in this site plan, this would be the Tractor Supply. This would be the outdoor garden area. And as part of that, they've installed or proposing to install what I'll call some decorative walls in front of the store and in front of the proposed outdoor garden area. Those were approved as part of the approval by the planning commission, and those were approved to be four foot in height. What the applicant is proposing now is to install, and I can probably show you, here's the elevation of Tractor Supply. These are all documents that were submitted for their approval in front of the planning commission earlier. This is the plan that I'm showing you here. The planning commission required as part of their approval to have the corner points extend in to a third of the distance to close up the gap here. So, this shows where those decorative walls are located in front of the Tractor Supply store, four foot in height. And what they're proposing to do now is to install, I guess it's up higher, is to install a fence on top of the, here we go. So, this would be the decorative screen wall that they've proposed that's four foot in height. And then they want to install a four-foot screen fence on top of that in all those locations that I just showed you, in front of the building and in front of the outdoor garden area. So, that's the general overview of the project. It requires approval from the planning commission as part of the process. So, I'll be available to answer any questions if you have.
If you'd like to introduce yourself and anything you'd like to add to that.
Thank you. My name is Steve Alexander, 3129 Ivy Hill Drive, Commerce Township, Michigan. Pleasure to be here. This was a request from Tractor Supply to us. We also supplied a snapshot of how it looks on some of their. We also supplied a snapshot of how it looks on some of their other stores as well. So they came to us and asked us to do this. And we're coming to you to see if it's okay.
All right. Well, I wanted to, I just want to start out, because I, I think this whole screen wall in the front, I know Frank, is his name Frank?
Yes, it is.
Frank, Frank with your firm, or the, was here earlier with Tractor Supply. I thought there was a little misunderstanding of it, or what, or some concerns. And so, we talked about the Howell store and the Fenton store, those two most close to Heartland, that had this particular wall structure that we're talking about. And somehow it, somehow it evolved into now, the approved four-foot wall to a wall across the whole front of the store, basically, at eight feet high. So, my opinion to Troy was, I said, we're going to make it look like a prison. What are we doing?
Yeah.
Very, very overpowering, taking away from the architecture of the building, and I think losing the intent of what a outdoor storage garden center type situation is, and the four-foot screen walls they had. So, we took, I am just going to pass them down the table, though, and you may be able to take these, the walls that are located in front of the Howell store.
Right.
And the Fenton store.
Right.
So that we had a better understanding. Because I personally don't like the eight-foot high. We'll see what the others think. But the Howell store has a 63-inch-high wall. So basically, a five-foot-high wall. The brick is 40 inches.
Is that what we're looking at now?
With a 23-inch.
This is a picture of the Howell Tractor Supply.
Here you go. I took them, and then I just wrote with a highlighter on them, so you could see.
And so what-
And then, and then the Fenton store has a solid wall that's 44 inches high, with a seven-inch-high fence on it for an overall height of 51 inches. So we got Fenton at 51 inches, Howell at 63, and Heartland being proposed at 96.
I hear you.
Well, a little overkill, do we think?
Well, I agree with you 100%. It's just that our client's coming forward and requesting this. And I have pictures here as well, that don't go up quite that high. I understand. And I don't know what they're evolving into. I know that at one point, there was some talk that they had equipment in this yard area that sticks up a little bit higher, and they just didn't want it to necessarily be that easy to see. Now, obviously, there's breaks in the wall, and you could meander your way around and see those things. But I believe their hope was to take things out of the line of sight.
Yeah, that Howell picture was taken yesterday, by the way. And they have, in the Howell store, there is nothing, not that one, the one I'm passing down. There was nothing that was higher than the wall.
Yeah.
And Fenton, all Howell had was, they used the height of their wall to take four fertilizer spreaders and lay them on top of the fence, and then chain them to it, so nobody could steal them. So they're using it as a display rack. But there was nothing, nothing.
I get it.
That was even five feet high.
I get it.
And Fenton had zero, and their wall's shorter, at 51 inches high.
I think, I keep hearing the word "outdoor garden center," and I don't think that was their intent. Well, they advertise it as a display area.
Right, outdoor display area.
And I think if we get eight-foot fortress wall, it's going to be an outdoor storage. And that's not really what I thought the intent was. And I, I agree, I think it's going to more, look more like a fort than it is a nice store. And they're concerned by putting any wall, because they wanted it as a display area, and they wanted to have people see their product.
And they, but they have it in Howell and Fenton.
And they agreed that, yeah, that the Howell and Fenton worked, and that they were satisfied with our request of this shorter wall, and it kind of was, it was a win-win for everybody. They said they were, they complied to it, and we said it would work for our ordinance, and it would hide the, keep the focus off the actual display, but yet, people could still see it if they walked up inside and walked their way around.
Well, I wonder if there's an option here of the four-foot-high wall, and, you know, let them put the 12-inch-high fence on it, if they're concerned of the handles of the lawnmowers and the wheelbarrows being that high. That would be something close to what you got. You got 63 inches in that picture, it's right there.
As long as they get them a little further than two and a half inches apart.
Well, do we have, is there a limit to how tall the display items can be behind the wall?
Cannot go higher than the wall.
So the wall is not the fence? The wall is the wall?
Well, the wall and the fence. It can't be higher than the total height.
So am I seeing equipment hung on that fence in the one picture?
Yeah.
Looks like gravel spreader, or fertilizer spreader?
Yeah, those were, that was in Howell.
Well, that's, that's higher than the fence, and to me, that's rather unsightly.
Well, I think that store manager probably, you know, got carried away. But they're, they're just setting up on the pickets of the fence, and you can see the cable running through, chaining them to it, so they stay there.
Yeah.
But, but that fence right there is 63 inches high.
The total wall and the fence.
The wall and the fence. Now, their wall is shorter, but the total height is 63 inches high. It's, it's taller than they were originally approved for.
Right.
It gives them some additional height in concern. But I've, I've shopped at the Fenton, occasionally the Howell store, all the time. I'm anxious for them to hurry up and get here, so I don't have to go there.
As am I.
So, but I never see stuff piled out front like that.
I, I can only imagine that there are some people back in corporate that are trying to evolve their stores into overcoming some of the problems they've had in the past, by, you know, redesigning this, or redesigning that, to make it a little bit better. And, you know, it would have been absolutely wonderful if we didn't have to come here tonight and request.
Right.
This, because we, we did a good job the first time that we came through, and to have to come back, I know better. But at the end of the day, it's something that they do do, and, and maybe this is evolving into something that they request the first time through going forward.
Yeah. Well, you take a look at the garden center, the outdoor display wall there to the right, that's the much taller. I mean, that's effectively what they're asking to run across the whole front of the store.
Troy, can we go back to the picture of the plan showing where the wall's located? You were there earlier.
Yeah, that's not totally accurate either, I think.
Just bear with me here.
Right there.
There you go.
This is the plan that the Planning Commission saw. It doesn't have the full wraparound, but it shows the, the location of, of where they were proposing to install them in front of, this is the Heartland store here.
So, so what we're looking at is, those are the sections of four-foot wall, is that correct?
Correct.
So they would like them to be eight feet high.
Yeah, four feet higher, and the top being the-
And if we go to the elevation, we could probably come close to figuring out what eight feet is, because we could probably come close to looking at what the front door height is, and you could picture what that would look like running across the whole front of the building.
So this is the front elevation?
Mm-hmm. So, probably not those windows on top of the door. Probably the doors are seven, eight feet high, be my guess.
Is the four-foot wall shown there?
No.
It's not.
Well, you can kind of get an idea on the far right.
Yes, you could. Oh, there you go.
Right there.
There you go.
Eight feet, right there.
See, it's, it's about the top of the door.
Yeah.
But you're talking about continuing that, that vision on the far right, running that across the front of the store. And I guess where, where I am coming from is, why do we have to be 96 when Howell is 63? And Fenton is 51?
You're just lucky.
We're just lucky. More is better, huh?
What's on the far right right now? Isn't there a fence there on that fence?
That is, that's the garden center wall, right now. That's what's going on that, that tall fence.
Does Commerce have one? I know Commerce built the Tractor Supply.
I'm not sure.
Not Commerce, White Lake, White Lake.
White Lake probably doesn't have a wall, would be my guess.
So Larry, is the fence, the addition of the four extra feet of black aluminum fencing on the whole, across the whole front of the store? So what are we seeing on the right? That's different than in the garden?
That, no, that's, that's, we call them garden centers, but it, for them, it's their outdoor display area behind the taller fence. But if we just keep the common term "garden center."
Yeah.
That would be the garden center fencing, like you see around Meyer, okay? That's what you're seeing on the right. Okay? They would like to carry that across the front of the store, following the pattern, if you scroll down one more page, all of those blocks running across the front of the store. There it is, right there. There it is in a line diagram. Just picture that running across the whole front of the store.
So, yeah, fortress is probably a good word, I think, would be used.
Prison-like.
Prison-like?
And I, I think it just is, without them hearing, understanding, it must be paranoia of something, but it's working in Fenton and Howell. So I would-
Again, maybe they're coming up with bigger equipment that sticks up a little higher, and, and-
But it sounds, it sounds like there's a restriction that they can't go any higher than the four-foot wall with their display. Is that correct?
Well, what, what it is, is, yeah, the, you, you can't put your material higher than your wall.
So if they have anything higher than the wall, then that's a problem, I would guess, if there's any enforcement there, so.
Well, I assume the wall means the wall and the fence.
It does. It means the wall and the fence.
It's in combination.
Yes.
Yeah, just like the garden center would be. And you look in those pictures, you'll see the racks behind the black fence.
Just the term "wall" means "wall" and "fence" means "fence" to me, so that's why I was-
I mean, I'd be willing to support the five-foot, which is basically Howell's format. Any combination of brick or fence, well, no. You need to put a one- or a two-foot fence on top of the brick wall. But five, five feet is pretty tall. I mean, I'm six, that's, that's my chin, that's quite tall.
Well, then if I may, Chairman Fox, as opposed to five feet, 72 inches then from the ground up, six, I mean, six feet.
Well, that's six feet.
Yeah. Well, I was asking for eight.
You started at eight.
I know. You took me to five.
All right, let's start over here. I'm thinking two and a half.
Two and a half feet.
I'm just thinking it's getting awful tall, personally. I mean, your block in the front of the building, it's-
Does Troy have the Howell, the pictures of the Howell store that he can show everyone?
Well, you've got it right there. Oh, on the screen?
For everyone to see?
There's their Howell, there's the Howell store. What are the dimensions of the brick?
So can you zoom in a little bit, so we can see those, for, for like-
You have the drawing with the dimensions. What do we have?
And if you're nice, I'll tell you. The block wall is 40 inches tall, and then the overall is 63 inches tall.
So you got a 23-inch fence.
It's 23 inches of black fencing.
So we had approved them at 48, so the difference would be 15. My thought is, if you want to copy that, knock your brick wall down a couple inches to the, to what was it?
Yeah, 40 inch.
Forty inches.
Take the eight inches off.
Put the same fence on top of it, just like that, and it's good with me.
Because, yeah, by pulling that block wall down, it opens the area up. You can visually see in there more. If you, can you back up just a little bit, Troy?
Yep.
And pan to the right, if you would, you can kind of see the whole pillar, so.
Yeah, their pillars are tall. We don't have pillars on ours.
So, so they're not proposing pillars?
Yeah, actually, their pillars are 72 inches, are they not?
Yeah, it's tall then.
That's where you started. See how tall those are? They're overpowering.
They are tall.
They are tall.
But if they were, and they're very, they block the view, but if they were, if they were fenced, you could see through them.
I like five. What are you doing? I'm saying, give them what they got in Howell. So it's, we're not, they seem to work with that before. Actually, they're working with Fenton and Howell both.
Am I the, so I like the fence and the wall at the Howell store, but am I the only one that doesn't like the objects hanging on them, like they're a rack?
Well, we don't allow that. We don't allow that.
Okay, so Howell must be allowing it, or they're going to not disallow it, and they, someone just looked at the picture.
Or they just didn't get caught yet.
They just happened to be there on the day it went up. We don't allow that. Every, our ordinance and their PD agreement states that everything must be behind the screening wall, which is the brick and the fence total height. So if we allow a 60-inch-high wall, fence and brick, they can't put eight-foot racks behind it. That is what the, you know, I want to share something with you guys. I, I did a little calculation out. The indoor storage space on this place is 23,900 square feet. You probably know that.
Yeah.
Do you know that the outdoor storage space is 22,000 square feet?
Yeah.
It's almost 50%.
I know.
It's almost equal split. So if we got eight-foot racks, that's what's, that's what they got in most of the, behind the bigger screening wall.
Yeah.
What's up front is lawnmowers, fertilizer spreaders, usually on the ground, bags of salt, bags of dirt. That's what's down there.
Yeah.
So the racks and all the stacking stuff is behind the tall wall. So with 22,000 square feet of outdoor storage space, 14,600 of it being behind an eight-foot screening wall, it's, I mean, how much more do you need to put out front? And how tall does it have to be?
You know, our job is to satisfy the client, get them in there and hope they stay for a long time.
Right.
That's why we bought the center.
Right.
You know, and we're honored and glad that they have come forward, and, and have come back now and asked us to do this, because it has presented a problem somewhere else. I don't know, I don't know who at corporate is upset about the things, but I do know that they've asked us to come back.
Okay.
And if, and if eight feet isn't the answer, which sounds like five feet is, I would, I would just ask that you consider six feet, only because this much of a black, I mean, it gets, it gets them to the 60-inch height. It just seems like that much just makes aesthetically balance a little bit better with the wall. I'm trying, Larry. I'm trying.
So Larry, I like, I like the balance at the Howell store with the shorter wall, the shorter brick and the short, and the taller wall.
I think you could give them the option and say, maximum four-foot brick, maximum uh-
Height altogether.
Overall height of 60 inches.
60 inches.
And they can take that brick wall down if they want to balance, as you were talking, if that, if that works for them. So if they wanted to do what Howell has, which is a 40-inch brick wall and a 23 or 24-inch fence on top of it, that would be their choice. Wouldn't matter. Because it's, once it's behind the brick or the fence, it's considered a screen. It's the height issue. Even if we can see through the fence, it's still a height issue.
Can I ask a-
Yep.
If you approved it with that type of stipulation, maximum height of the brick wall at a certain amount, that implies that they could have no brick wall, and it would just be all the fencing. Would that be-
No, sorry. Good, good catch.
Okay. So if you want some kind of brick wall, maybe at least at some minimal height standard that you want of that brick wall, in my opinion.
Well, you know, Fenton has a seven-inch fence. Looks a little short to me, but that's what they've got on a, I think I've got a picture of the Fenton store. On a 44-inch brick wall.
Well, there goes my argument, that the balance wasn't right.
I don't think they have a corporate setup. I think they do whatever gets designed. I mean, those two are just so extreme in themselves, in terms of what, how they're different. But I would think we would be looked upon favorably if we matched the maximum height of the two stores that they were modeling after.
Fair enough.
We didn't go with the short one, which would be Fenton, if we went with the max of Howell. And I could support that. You all right?
Do we, do we come up with a minimum height, is that for the brick? Do we want to do that, go that, or?
You can.
Well, 40 inch is what Howell has.
You can crack with that, right there, if you want.
Do we want to dictate 40, or say match Howell's store?
Well, we want to give Mr. Troy some of a guess.
No.
They're, well, they're 60s, they could argue. Yeah.
That's the cap on it.
No.
So.
Minimum 40, maximum 48.
Overall height, 60.
60 inches, yeah.
I'll take the 66 inches, no problem.
63?
You know, these meetings are recorded.
I'll take 63.
How was, how was-
It's 63 with this, with the cap on, I think is what-
Howell was 63, was it?
63. 63.
Yeah, 63.
And that's fine. Okay. You ready for a motion there?
I think so.
Are you going to write one? Troy, you have to play devil's advocate.
Yeah.
Because you have to get this through.
Let's see, I'd like to make a motion to pass, to accept the site plan application number 541, with the requirements of the new screening wall, be a minimum 40 inches on the brick, with a maximum of 48 inches on the brick, with a total maximum height of 63 inches.
Get all, I think so.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Voight, second from Commissioner Kalani. Is there any further discussion? You okay with that, Tom?
Yeah. Can I, I just, what was the total maximum height? 63. 63, okay.
We gave them three more inches.
We don't need to include that the fence would be included in it. They know...
Yes, Troy, how do you want that worded?
Do you want to add the word "fence" in there somehow?
Sure. 63, including?
Including a fence.
Sure.
Yeah. In a similar style to what they had shown in their plans.
They have two in their plan. They have the narrow gap and the wide gap.
Oh, yeah.
The wide gap is fine. That's what they're using.
Well, should we tell them which one we want? We don't want to get...
Yep, go right ahead.
We don't allow to give them the choice.
Using the typical spacing of fence brackets.
Right. Using the typical spacing of fence.
Okay.
Has further drawing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, motion carries. Good deal. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you very much.
When are they going to start? Hopefully soon?
I sure hope so. We're going to go to rumblings too, you know, if somebody helps.
Yeah, well, that's what I...
You know, initially, we heard they were scared about coming, and then you pointed out they're in similar situations in other places, so we're still looking forward.
Yeah, I was afraid that's what this was really about, was that.
Yeah. Well, that'll be, that'll be very disturbing if they found some way to back out of it because I'm thinking it's a short on that.
Well, it wouldn't be the reason that they really left. Can I get that?
Yeah, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Maybe we'll find out.
Yeah. All right, next up, item nine, call to the public. Is there anyone else this evening that would like to say anything? All right, we'll close call to the public. We'll move to item 10, planners' report. Troy?
I do have a few things. I guess first, I think I sent you an email, there's a golf outing, they're looking for, I think at that time, they're looking for two slots, it's now down to one. I indicated if I could get an answer by tonight's meeting, if there's any interest in anybody...
It's the 15th?
Yes. So...
I'm in deposition, so okay.
Okay, so no go.
Work.
Then, the second item I've got is I've been contacted by essentially the shops at Walden Woods, management, if you will, at Walden Woods, that a number of their smaller retail tenants in that complex have concerns about the availability of signage for that complex. They feel their businesses don't have as much signage, I don't even know if signage is a word, but I guess I'm using that. They don't have as much sign accessibility for the shops at Walden Woods as other more recent commercial complexes that have come through and the signage that's available. In order to amend or modify the sign provisions, that would require a modification to the planned development. They are hoping and desiring to install some signs on a dedicated monument sign to identify the name of the development. I've got a picture of what they've kind of shown. They have one sign that's identifying the development shops at Walden Woods. They'd like to install some tenant signs on either side of it. This is all very preliminary, all very cursory, but I'm generally looking for some comments, not a decision as to whether or not this is something that the planning commission would even entertain to amend the PD. It would have to go in front of the planning commission and the township board, but they're not interested in coming in here to get beat up and told no, so...
I don't know if we've ever done that. I have a problem with this proposal. I think that that's kind of where, in fact, it's consistent with what we want in terms of signage, in my opinion, is it's, you know, and that's what people are coming to, you know, that's what you're seeing more and more, is the monument having the multiple tenants showing on there. I would like it, but at the end of the day, I would like the signage to be fairly consistent in terms of, you know, everybody's going to want a logo or something like that, but I think it needs to be uniformed in the way it's presented.
Okay.
I mean, that would be my two cents.
Keith, what do you think?
Well, first of all, I mean, I'm open, I'm ready, I'd be willing to discuss it, sure. Just first throw at it is that it is kind of an entry gateway into the township. That's what the four corners we wanted for. And you're kind of taken away a little bit from there, especially when you have no tenant and you have a blank plaque there. But other than that, I mean, I, and I think it's going to be very difficult to convince them to make them all the same color or all the same lettering without any logos, but that's, we'll see.
Well, I didn't say without any logos, but I would like to see some kind of...
Consistency.
Consistency, sure. I wouldn't even necessarily go with same colors or all that, I just want some consistency.
Restrict a lot of that, just by making them the same size.
Sure. Yeah, I think...
I mean, I'm open for discussion, sure.
Yeah, what do you think, Tom?
So can I ask, where would that be located, at the corner?
It's already there.
It's already there.
So it is, I thought there was one there that was similar to that.
Yeah. This sign is there, it just doesn't have the...
Side plaque area?
Yeah, it's not, this was identified, this sign in the PD agreement was supposed to be solely dedicated to identify the name of the complex. They have other monument signs that are for the purpose of identifying businesses in the complex, but this sign itself is supposed to be dedicated solely for the name of the development, and they just want to know if it, could they come in and do something like this, or, but it would require an amendment to the PD.
Yeah, so I'm open, I'm open to that, but like Joe, I like the uniformity, I like the look of it, and I know they can't all be the same color brick with the same cap on the top, but those heights and that uniformity is important, as Keith said, it's kind of a gateway, you know, all of those corners there.
Now, well, they're not going to change anything of the brick structure that's there. They just want to put basically what is the equivalent of two, I'll call them, large rectangular light boxes that will have dividers in them, and each, the way that's drawn, it will be a stack of four businesses on the left and a stack, there you go, that one. That's much better.
They're backlit?
Yeah, you won't, well, they're the opaque panels, so the only thing you're going to see is going to be the lettering behind it. You're not going to see big light rectangles. You're only going to see the letters, the word "tenant" would be lit.
Yeah, and again, there's no proposal, so there's no real request. This is just a conceptual plan for the purposes of amending a PD agreement, if that's something that you would feel would be important during the review of that PD amendment, is to physically see a sign with those things. I can certainly relay that those are the kinds of things that the planning commission would want to see as part of that.
So, yeah, I'm open to the conversation, but a point I want to make about something like this is when I'm driving through an intersection like that, I don't want to be a distracted driver. I want to make it through that light, and if those signs are so small I can't even read them, it's almost a waste of time to have them.
I think they're big. How big are those?
Oh, I know the shops at Walden Woods, I know that sign, I've seen that, but if you are now going to, in proportion, make those, and how many words, you know, can you get?
How big are those panels? Those panels are pretty big. Those panels are probably 20 inches high, each one.
It says they're four by, four foot six inches in length here, by, each, each one of these is one foot six by...
So 18 by four and a half.
Four foot six here, on this proposal.
So minus three inches each, 1.6, so they're about, the letters are about a foot tall, minus the space between them.
And I would, I would respectfully disagree that we should impose that this is our gateway. I mean, it is, it's a corner, it's not a, it doesn't say "shop at Walden Woods," welcome to Heartland on it. It's a, it's a development sign at the corner there, and it recognizes the development, and I think having tenant signs is consistency with that, with what is being proposed there, which is, and I happen to, I have to, I completely understand. We have, our sign ordinance is fairly, I think it's fair. I mean, I don't think it's overly conservative, and it's not overly liberal, but we, you know, this, and it's a constant issue, depending on where you are in the township, I mean, and how, where your building is located. I mean, if you're, if you're the tattoo parlor, and you have, you have three, you have four sides that, one's a front, and one faces the road, and there's a side that faces the south part of the, the south, you know, parking lot. So we need to be, you know, our business community pays a lot in taxes.
Yeah, I don't think you're hearing anybody think it's not a good idea.
I was a little concerned with some, you know, the possibility that we couldn't find a way to make this work when we can. I didn't think anybody...
I didn't get that out of any of us.
All right.
My comment would be, I support it.
I would too.
Troy already knows that. I think it's a good idea. I don't think it's much different than we allowed on the Ramco project. If you're coming south on Heartland Road, right before the roundabout, you'll see that we allowed Ramco to put a sign there at the entrance, and you'll also notice at the waterfall at 23 and 59, we've got the big one up there with Myers on it. And then you also, while not on a corner, you have on the TFC Center, it's not the Walmart Center, it's more, Troy.
Speedway.
The Tractor Supply. The Tractor Supply Center, we have a big one at that driveway. So I think this is totally appropriate. We have changed our sign ordinance over the years, and we did with those two PDs, allow a little bit more generous signage, if you recall, and I think we might as well make it a fair playing field.
I agree.
So I'm in support, I just want to make a comment, and I've noticed this about many of the signs in Heartland, is that, let's say, the bottom word "tenant" on some businesses, it's so close to the ground, they, when they put the landscaping in, the landscaping grows above the sign. And I don't know, Bell Tire might be like that, there's, if you look around while you guys drive, and some of the shrubbery is higher than, this is for future use, something to keep in mind, when they pick the plants.
Be careful when you're looking around while you're driving. You have no distraction.
No distracted driving.
And for those of us who travel north and south on Old 23, as opposed to east and west, and we spend a lot of time at that light. There's plenty of time to sit and read those signs.
Lately, yeah, we have a rush hour in Heartland, so we're all spending...
We should start a rumor, there's going to be a roundabout at 23 and 59.
Don't start any rumors.
Well, you just spilled the beans.
Yeah, for...
There really is.
Both viewers.
All viewers, yeah.
All righty. Anything else, Troy?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Boy, you're limited to three minutes. You've really taken it up to that.
I've saved it all up. This is a document, I'm presuming you have seen, this is a strategic plan update. This is a document I inherited as part of my coming on here in my position, and part of that is to examine, in this area here, there's about three areas that I'm going to try to zoom in on, and I'm going to try to get a little discussion out of you. It's in this area here, number three, community development, and there are three potential zoning ordinance amendments that are outlined here, and the goal here is to decide, are these things that the planning commission wants to look at, are these things the planning commission does not want to look at? So my goal is to get some feeling from you as to what your thoughts are on this. The, it's my understanding that there was also some discussion on these topics prior to my being here, and on this first one, it's a comment to review the light industrial architectural standards and determine a need for revisions. So it's my understanding that there was some discussion at some point by the planning commission as to whether or not architectural standards for the light industrial, and I'm not sure which way you were leaning, maybe leaning towards not as restrictive in architectural standards, or maybe you were leaning towards more restrictive architectural standards for light industrial. I'm guessing the architectural standards that apply, which apply to commercial and light industrial, somewhat the same, you were looking to lessen those standards. Is that, is that kind of what the thought?
Does it really matter whether, I think we should review them and decide whether we think they're appropriate for today, whether they're...
Yeah.
I think we should review the light industrial architecture standards...
Okay.
And decide whether they need to be more, less, or unchanged.
So if, at a future meeting, if I include that stuff as maybe an agenda item, and we'll have some discussion on that, and I'll give you guys probably about 700 pages of documents to go through, and we can...
Just make it a, just make it a short agenda.
Unless you know our review first.
Well, I think we need to decide whether we need to review it.
True. What I was, but what would be helpful is to, I don't know if you had some that you could show were fairly liberal, or on one side and more restrictive on another.
I think what we were doing is typically, we've looked at communities that we like.
Right.
You know, and, you know, if we say we think that, you know, stuff in Howell and Brighton looked pretty good, then staff would gather up the standards of Howell and Brighton, and then we would have some comparison as to what communities that we, good, bad, or indifferent.
Okay. So you're interested in not only some, what, some other standards from some other communities, but maybe just some pictures of light industrial-type buildings, and using that as a template of, here's what we like, here's what we don't like? So my job will be to scour the country and find light industrial buildings.
You'd probably do that from your desk and the Internet, by the way.
There we go.
All right. Save yourself some time.
So I'll, I'll do that. You know, light industrial, it's not uncommon in some communities, they like pole barns sometimes, and so it'll be, I'll give you guys plenty of pictures to look at. The second one is to review the site plan amendment process and determine the need for revisions. We just had a site plan amendment here tonight. Section 6.1.10 outlines how minor site plan revisions can be handled by staff, and essentially, there's only limited things, just to kind of bring you up to date. Changes in the right-of-way easement area is something staff could amend the site plan to. Changes to accommodate unforeseen natural or environmental conditions. Changes to the drive curb-cut access, sidewalks, or angle of parking lots are things that can be modified by staff. Changes to some of the landscape trees, species, stuff like that. The location of accessory buildings, one of the cases we had tonight, it was nothing but accessory buildings, but those would be things staff can change. And then lastly is changes to color, hue, saturation. However, a lot of times, the planning commission's very specific on what's approved for some of those. So those are the limited things. So that means when an applicant comes in and says, well, it turns out we couldn't get this, or we couldn't do that, that means they have to come back in front of the planning commission, and so is that something the planning commission would be interested in modifying, looking at?
Could I just offer, one, I, we don't do an amendment a year, in my history of being here, I don't believe, but I think we should review it anyways. When we've got an agenda that something like that can fit, I think it would be good for us to understand what our, that's not a section that we deal with very often, and we may, after listening to Troy's experience, I mean, he's newer to Heartland, but he's not new to planning, he may offer some suggestions on some things that have come up in his career that he says, you know, these are typically the types of things that we would see a qualified planning staff approved to approve, because we're probably only going to know what we've experienced here, and you probably could put a list much longer than we could.
Yeah, I'd like that idea, I think we should take a look at that.
Mm-hmm.
And because we do have this qualified, I mean, qualified planning...
I mean, that's what you go out and hire, that's one of the things you hope they bring, are... are their experiences, that they can help us advance the process.
Okay. Then the last item I've got is a potential ordinance amendment to review the planned development process, determine a need for revisions. Is there anything there you feel that warrants?
We just did that, probably, oh man, not long ago. Long could be six, eight years.
Why don't we take the first two and put that third one off?
That's fine.
I would recommend that, and here's why, I think that, that those first two are going to give, it's going to take some time to do anyway, a little bit. And that, that last one is going to take a lot more time, and, you know, you know, something like, looking at a PD and comparing it to what signs have been offered now that weren't offered when that PD went into place, so to speak, that might be something that we might want to have staff give, not about having someone to do a full-blown opening up, almost like a...
If it could be done that way, something to look at, but I'd agree, I'd stay out of the PD right now. Last time we changed it, that was a tremendous amount of work, and I don't know that I think it's that out of date.
Okay. That's all I have for planner report.
Well, that was more than three minutes. There's no time limit on Troy. Troy can have all the time he wants. Anybody else, committee reports, comments? No?
While we're working on ordinances, don't, let's not forget the canopy lighting, that needs to be changed. Right?
Sure.
Yes, yes.
So, and I have a comment, and so, I don't want to say a bone to pick, but on two different occasions, I asked for a stop sign to be replaced, and it was a year and a half ago, and it was through Dave when it started, and if your drive, if we left from here and we backtracked down and traveled across, didn't get on 59, but took the road, passed Bell Tire, made the first right and headed right to Meyer.
Are you talking at like the crossroads of Big Boy, is that Roe v. Drive?
Yeah.
And the far east north-south road of Meyer?
So go east on Roe v.
West.
Thank you. Go west on Roe v., Big Boy's on your left, make your first right, and then you're heading straight north to Meyer. When you get to Meyer parking lot, there used to be a stop sign right there. It was taken out two years ago by a snowplow, and right now that white line is still painted on the ground. I still, I still stop there.
But nobody else does.
I know. So, that stop sign needs to be replaced.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to, and this is going to be a little tricky, because it's an internal private road system, there's no requirement of a stop sign.
That's a PD, isn't it?
Well, other than, I bet it's on their site plan.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that that one was, but the, our code enforcement officer went over to, and I've, I've only been here for a certain period of time, and you and I've talked about it, and I've talked with our code enforcement officer, and he has gone in to talk with the manager on a couple of occasions, hasn't met up with him, but I believe it was the assistant manager that indicated that they were initially going to do it, and then it hasn't been done, and then upon a revisit, was sensing a little bit of, I might be reading into it, but was sensing a little bit of hesitation on their part to do that, and so, that's now triggered me to kind of look at, well, can I require that? Can I even force it? So...
Why don't we look at the site plan? If it's on the site plan, and they're supposed to have it, then...
I would think we could make them put it in.
We could make them put it in.
If it's on the common ground, not on Myers, that's Ramco, not Meyer.
Yeah, it's right, right in front of Meyer you're talking about, you're kind of coming into Meyer's site.
It could be on the, it could be Ramco's responsibility. I know exactly, I just drove that.
Well, maybe that's why Meyer is...
Probably saying it's not our issue.
Yeah.
But I checked the site plan, because I'm not so sure, because we've had, we've had signage on site plans, internal parking signage.
Well, I know it was there, and the white line is painted on the ground, so I don't think anyone can deny that, and probably I could root around in the grass and find the broken off stub to it. So it's a safety issue to me.
Yeah.
Right? Because there's no one stopping at that corner. They just move right through it.
Okay. Anybody else, anything? Need a motion to adjourn, please?
New adjourn.
Voight, and a second from Colani. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Foes nay, motion carries.